Noticed.
Yes.
Recommendation approved minutes of the December eighth training workshop and the December eighth regular Board of Education meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Okay, by any say by Darrell to approve the minutes. Any discussion, changes, modifications? Hello, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, carried. Resolution to approve the bill list.
I'll make a motion to approve the bill list.
Okay, by any saying by Sue to approve the bill list. Okay, heard. Any discussion or questions, complications?
I have a couple of quick questions and I have to apologize because I'm inexperienced when the rest of the team probably knows these things better. But just looking at the bill list, there were a couple of things Jeff that I didn't quite understand. I guess what the particular item signify. On page twelve of the bill list, there's something identified as Wisconsin S T T child support payment. And again, it's not a great amount, but I'm wondering if you could kind of define that.
Yeah, we're required by law to do wage garnishments for those child support payments. So it's just a garnishment that we pay will deduct and then we go and pay it.
Okay.
To the proper.
I see, okay. And then there was the second one on page fifteen to save a school success.
Yep. That's our mental health school, been a school that we have here. So we contracted St. A, which has now changed their name. So it'll look different on the next bill list when we get one. But we split the cost with North Shore and then other Peter schools that buy seats to provide services for students with mental health needs that aren't quite ready to do a full day of high school or no school.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you defining this.
That contract fifty percent of that is Arrowhead, forty percent is part of Lakeside and ten percent Northlake. So it's a it's a cooperative agreement that we have those two districts to share the cost of that. And it'll become on your next, one of your next board meetings, it'll show up as well point rather than same thing.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hello, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, carried. Thank you. Okay, superintendent report.
The first item of the superintendent's report is a real treat. We have, this is Shayna Morgan and Mr. Dan Miller who are with our social studies department. And we have some students from our safe club, which I'm going to let them explain what that stands for and what they do. So those of you that are speaking, if you want to come up to the podium and I have a clicker here.
Hello, school board. My name is Max Fallow. I am a junior here at Arrowhead High School and I am president of Arrowhead State. I am here along with my fellow faculty members.
My name is Nina Asher Feltier. I'm Reagan Ross.
As well as our state advisors to tell you a little bit about the good work state is doing. So safe stands for survivor and veteran experience. Survivors being Holocaust survivors. And like the name entails, we really deal with the helping and honoring of local community veterans. We also educate others about the sacrifices our veterans make. And another big part of our club is preserving stories of our terrorism sacrifice and bravery through veteran interviews, which we'll get to in a minute. Now more than ever, as the wars of the twentieth century fade in the past, it is vital that we preserve the stories of terrorism bravery and courage in an attempt to pass on their memory and make sure that it is in ones. So I'm Max, I'm the president, like I said, and my main job is to kind of manage the entirety of the club. I'm constantly looking forward to the next couple of months to make sure the club is running smoothly. I also lead the full group and executive board meetings which occur month.
So I'm Nina and along with Lauren Webb, I work as a cover of the cross coordinator. I'm posting on all social media platforms, notifying all of our members as well as the rest of the school about our events and meetings, just so that we can get information out to them. And then I'm Reagan, I'm the education coordinator for safe and my role in safe is to find various educational opportunities for both our members and our Arrowhead community to educate them more on veterans and best ways that we can serve and honor them. So some state events, as safe has grown, we've been able to incorporate multiple different events during our school year. Our biggest event has been our veteran interviews, which occur all year round, which gives our members opportunities to interview and listen to veteran stories. Along with that, we have been previously hosted a veteran coffee event and then partnered with State Senate for a spaghetti dinner, which has been great ways for us to give back to veterans in our community. This past December, we hosted a refugee drive for the Afghanistan refugees that are currently being held at Fort McCoy. We raised over three hundred clothing items and eight hundred dollars in cash from that drive. And years past, we have also hosted a charity drive for the Milwaukee VA Hospital, which is running pretty successful and a great way for us to give back to the Milwaukee VA because they do great work for veterans as well. And along with that, we have numerous educational opportunities throughout our year. Last year, we did a showing of the one man play, the Misco Project, which is a project designed for high schoolers to learn more about the Holocaust, as well as field trips to the Milwaukee Education Resource Center and Holocaust speakers to educate our members as well as the Arrowhead students. And we've also been very active in participating in both school events such as a Hox Fest, the Homecoming Play, the Door Decorating Committee. And then we have also participated in the Honor Flight Homecoming. I'm sure many of you are familiar with the Honor Flight. We've been able to be at the General Mitchell Airport to welcome the veterans back home, which is a great opportunity both for the veterans and for our state members to show the veterans really how much we appreciate them and how we care about preserving their stories. So as mentioned earlier, interviews are our most common way of getting to know the veterans and their stories. We gather a group of people on this Saturday. Avery Dom is our veteran liaison who gets in contact with the veterans. We have at least one interview per month, which is a requirement to be in the club. It really creates a way for us to remember their stories and get to know a little bit about the veterans.
So since it started in the spring of twenty fourteen with the five founding members over to the right, it has grown over its eight years to about thirty-five to forty active members. One of the biggest changes that occurred in safe was due to COVID, where we changed all the interviews, which were previously in person to virtual. And we thought this was going to be a big deal, but it turned out to be extremely convenient because not only does it eliminate exposure exposure risks for both us and the elderly veterans, but it was really a good way to eliminate the transportation and setup logistics of an interview. And due to this, we had greatly increased participation in our interview. Also with the aging of veterans, we started out really looking to interview World War II and Holocaust survivors. But due to the aging and with time, we had to transition to the Vietnam, Iraq and Afghanistan era. And it was safe to say that this really was a smooth transition and now we're consistently interviewing in Afghanistan veterans. And with the extreme growth of the club, we needed a way to manage it easily. And we decided to use Canvas and remind text, which are a great way to get announcements out of managed the club through attendance records and reminders. So that has been going great for us. So like I said, we had thirty-five, around thirty-five active members. And the great thing about safe is that it's only requirement for being in the club is that you will on at least one veteran interview throughout the year. And because of the lack of requirements, it really proves that our members are doing it because they believe in our purpose and our mission. And it's not to check off some box or a jitter required. As a club here at Arrowhead, we have interviewed over forty veterans. And prior to the club being established here at Arrowhead, there was an additional fifty interviews. So that's closing in on a hundred veteran interviews. That's a hundred stories that we have preserved and passed on, which is a great number that we really pride ourselves on. In the past couple of years, we have started up a collection drives, which have also been great successes. We have collected thousands and thousands of dollars in items. In this December's Afghan Refugee Drive alone, we collected around eight hundred dollars in cash and three hundred to four hundred items. And these were great items. There was fans shoes, there was coats, there were snow pants. And we really feel that those who are less fortunate than us, those refugees were really good, great use of those. In addition to this, a large part of safe is our card writing, which we do often at the full group meetings. And we have written hundreds, if not thousands of cards throughout our time in safe. And this is really a great part to lighten up the day of a veteran and give back because they sacrificed so much for us.
So we received really great positive feedback from our community. We like to educate the community through the events, not only Arrowhead, but our whole community as well. Our club has a very powerful impact on the veterans, making them feel appreciated and loved. And to make their stories live on. As mentioned before, we send lots of cards to our veterans just to show our appreciation and show them that someone cares. Mr. Hadley is in the middle, the middle picture right there. And he plays a huge role in our club. He's always eager and willing to share his story when speaking to new members. And he's also been a part of our homecoming. We have received shoutouts from the Honor Flight through Instagram, just saying thank you for sending so many of the stories of veterans that look especially important. We've also received articles written by Milwaukee Journal Sentinel and Fox Six.
Thank you for lending us your time to tell you a little bit about our club. Anybody's, any questions, we're happy to answer.
I'd like to know each of you why you are so personally passionate about this organization.
Well, for me personally, I went to Swallow, which was where the founding five members started the club prior to coming here. And I was close to one of the, one of the founding members, younger sister. So that was kind of where I, I've always been passionate about it. My grandpa was in the army and it's just, it's a good way. I really am passionate about it and it's good to give back.
So my dad was in the army as well as my, two of my grandpas, they both served in the military. So I think that as they're getting older, they just feel underappreciated for their service. So just, this is a way to reach out to them and show them that they are appreciated. And then I joined safe, my grandpa was other unit and I joined safe to kind of use that as a way to learn more about not only his experience in the military, but also all the veterans, their experiences in the military, to kind of learn more about that. And just a way to give back to veterans because they've done so much for us.
Thank you.
So this is a very commendable and amazing group that you guys are a part of. So I'd like to thank you for being a part of it first. But also I'm just curious, is there a place, maybe I missed this, that that these interviews are digitally documented so others can look at them?
Yeah, I forgot to mention that. We have a save YouTube page. I don't have the credentials for that, but yeah, we have it on, we have it, we edit them and then we post them to our YouTube page for people who look at.
Don't you send those to the phone and all?
We have in the past, yes. Our best ones are that we feel really passionate about. We sent them off to some organizations like that.
I know there's one of that's in your picture, there are unfortunately several of them are all over with us. How do you go about finding the veterans in your interview?
So Avery Dom is our veteran liaison. So she has connections with her family, friends, as well as their connections between their friends that they have served with, what people that they know about. So she's been being coordinated with finding the veterans.
It's been largely word of, word of mouth. And at some of the events, like the spaghetti dinner or the veterans breakfast, which by Ro Capa, we've kind of given an announcement. And that's where we kind of found it. And the safe members have parents and we have a local veterans list of about around a hundred veterans that we've been using for that.
I also know from more work to that, one of them just turned a hundred years old last week in the area. I can tell you that some of these guys, ninety year old, one of the veterans, that Chuck who's been here.
Yes.
I think you probably, I don't know. I can tell you that some of those guys, like to over the World War Two, a female veteran who was the Secretary Pragma Bird. You're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Shayna, nice job with the group.
Thank you.
And Dan, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good, a wonderful, it's really grown a lot. And you guys have done marvelous things and yeah.
The next part of our superintendent's report is also a real treat. You know, it's always hard to follow students, but Mr. Mangin, our director of activities and athletics is going to give a report on our fall activities. All curriculars, eating athletics, lots to celebrate. And I'm going to apologize because I'm going to change the technology. So I try not to be preachy Ryan as he's talking.
I'm, mine's old school, there's a fall man technology. So you have a report in front of you. I usually try to do this twice a year, just to touch base, give you some updates, give you opportunities to see some of the things that are going on, ask questions and so on. So usually in the fall, in the winter, I update the fall and then then in the summer, you just touch base on the year end. So obviously we have over fifty fun activities, so I don't highlight every, every one of them in your report. There I just highlighted a couple, a couple of things that are going on in terms of clubs involved and things. Obviously, safe is one of those. I didn't have them in my report and they were going to be here anyway. Our esports club, which is a group of kids, probably between forty and fifty kids that meet multiple times a week, they're competing in the state tournaments in Madison in a week here. So they compete in many games, which I don't, not fault in knowing the names of those games. Again, I'm old, I'm out team, still participating against a couple of championships. Black Trial will compete in the regionals virtually in a couple of weeks. And Ro Capa, who does, started up the veterans breakfast again. You know, we've done that annually for many years, having to take a break last year. So that was successful this past November. I highlighted DECA this past September. The state DECA organization wrote a two-page letter commending Steve Melzer, our DECA advisor, for all he's done. Basically, I gave you the first bit of that paragraph. Over three hundred kids are involved in our DECA activities every year. And over the course of the last twenty-four years, they've raised a quarter of a million dollars for many different charities. Obviously, we have Hot Fest, those of you know, Hot Fest was again, we had it this past September seventeenth, as well as our marketing nights for basketball games. Early December, we had two of those, always well attended, fun events involving a lot of different people. Also, this, this past couple, just recently, we had thirty-seven qualifiers for a state DECA convention, which is the most we've ever had. But DECA is going to be busy in February, competing to win a lot of awards. So they're active, busy, doing a lot of great things, our DECA kids. Next category, I just put some news and odds and ends, things that are new in the department. One of our clubs that we've been looking for a while, we've been looking for a chess club advisor for seven years. We got one back, Jim Passler has done a underspin on it. It's not as competitive as it's been in the past, it's more of a casual one, but now it's all electronic. So we're buying electronic chess rather than a old school chess and having a good time. So I'm just happy we've been looking for advisor for a long time on that. Student said, who's in charge of homecoming parade and all of our homecoming activities. This is the first time, at least in the time I was here, and I think in a long time, that we had an outdoor pep rally for, for homecoming when both campuses involved at one time. And we were really lucky to have an October day that was like sunburn and, and it was a hot October day and it was a really fun event. I mean, and it makes us, I would plan on doing a similar thing and I probably get thirty-three in rain, but I'm trying to do it. So it was a good event to be able to bring both campuses together. And again, new, so the student center kind of had to redraw the plan of how to do this. So that was good. Jumping around, those of you that have been to some events at the stadium, we have the new features finished, finished last year. And that was really a nice addition for season in terms of being able to give people more space on the other side when we're hosting big events. So I definitely noticed it as an events supervisor, so kudos to the support there. We had a new gym, updated our mural and then just in the last three weeks, we updated the mural in the east gym. So to get a chance to get in there, take a look at it. It was donated money by a longtime fan, his family, Pat, the fan passed away, donated some money once. So we updated our mural to be a sign and a little bit of bling, it's a flashy sign that they donated. We have their fans name on it. And obviously this past weekend, if those of you are aware, we had the naming of the court to Kretasi Court. So that happened on this past Saturday. I think everything went really well, so a great community event and followed by a really exciting basketball game. So, so a really fun event. So next part of my, next part of my presentation, just basically highlight some of the athletic things from the fall. Our athletic numbers as highlighted on there, we had six hundred and eighty-six kids involved in sports this past fall, which is up ten from last year. One of my goals I list later is to try to bump that up higher. We dropped off a little bit the previous year because of COVID. And so where I was looking to grow, but you can see the, the numbers by sport, sports have different sports out of the flow. But our, our numbers are still very strong. I also listed the conference finishes of the sports for the fall alongside it. We had five teams competing at the state level, second place finish for our girls field hockey team and our girls swim team. The next page highlights some of those individuals that accomplished great things. Couple of stellar swimmers who were state champions and handful of them actually. And then we got some all-state soccer and football players as well. So the swimmers obviously are doing it by winning at the meet. Soccer and football players got it by holding accomplishments after their season. I listed some of the future goals and objectives for the athletics part of the department, increasing participation numbers, update coaches handbook, live streaming sponsorship, digital rosters, all things that live streaming is something that is becoming pretty common. It's, it's, there's challenges with it based on location, based on facility, based on sport. So something we're always trying to improve on and make, make changes to. But you know, three years ago, there weren't many people live streaming anything. And now a lot of stuff is being live streamed. It's, it's a great thing, but it provides challenges departmentally to say, okay, what are you, do you do it for free? Do you charge? Arcade is important for, for funding. So those are, you know, looking for sponsorship with the live streaming. So those are all things that we're exploring and thinking about what's, what's the best option for the future facility needs. Those are things that I was in the front and back of my mind, depending on what's going on. We've got some pool meets right now that we're having to address in terms of expensive improvements for those state champion swimmers. So scoreboards, weight room, always areas that we're looking to see if we can find ways to improve it to them. Because you see six hundred and eighty-six athletes for this year for previous fall season. We have about between twelve and thirteen hundred per year. So of our two thousand students, you know, somewhere between twelve and fifteen hundred are involved athletics. In terms of all our club's activities, virtually it's two thousand, it's right there. And if you count them multiple times, it's in the three to four thousand, the number of people are involved. The next page just highlights our, couple of our financial activities as we speak. The band is playing up at North Campus with, you know, our, our Peter Schools concert, jazz band, a little bit of everything. So I was, I had to, I was rocking out before I came here. So we had, we had a great musical with Broadway company this past fall, Catch Me If You Can. And as you can see at the bottom, we have a unique experience this year. Our school play is actually going to be a musical again. Marilyn Marcano is going to do lame miss as a musical for our school play. So we're going to have two musicals in one year, which is double the fun and triple the work. So, so listing all the, you know, the Jerry Awards and nominations for high school musicals and plays. And so those are all the kids and adults that got nominated from that event in October. So they will get these in the spring based on choose the winners, but those are all the nominees. So it's quite lengthy as you can see. Then basically I finish it up as I do most of the time, is the last five pages are just a snippet of the community service events that our clubs and activities do. It isn't mandatory, but pretty much every one of our clubs activities, sports does something, whether it be, you know, a fundraiser for somebody or a drive or something. So that's a couple of pages that highlight some of the things that happened this past fall in terms of service. So as you know, in the, in the summer, I'll usually give you another update with other sports activities. And we are, you know, in the, in the midst of a lot of club activity and winter sports is pretty much in the middle. So we're, and we'll start in February with the W I tournament series and so on. So again, just a brief touch on, on a lot of them, but there's a lot more that I didn't talk about. It's just, you know, picking and choosing some to highlight. So question.
Yeah. Any chance the mock trial will not be virtual and be allowed to have people come and watch?
I don't, so it's not my call. I think it's, I think it's a decision by the state of Wisconsin mock trial. And I think that's what they've decided on.
It's already, okay.
I don't know that for sure, but I'm pretty sure that's.
Yeah, well, first of all, great overview of everything here. I was pretty impressed with, so that for DECA, we had thirty-seven qualifiers for the state competition. Is that, is that like, is it an increase from another staff?
More than they've ever had, right? So I think the average, I would say is probably in the mid to upper twenties. And so they're quite a bit higher, so.
So what is the participation for DECA from how many numbers?
Well, it's interesting, in the three hundred, in the three hundred ballpark of the people involved, but in terms of the competitive, it's significantly less. So like there's a lot, like the DECA members through our marketing classes and other career things, most of those kids are involved in DECA. And then you have the ones who are really heavily involved and that's probably in the, that's under a hundred, that's probably in the fifty to seventy-five range, so.
It is really a long-term club that has been active for quite a while.
Yeah, very committed, a lot of stuff. And again, the, the things they're competing in are more, you know, those are categories that are done statewide. But the, the Hot Fest and the marketing nights, which involves DECA, are unique in places to that. The Hot Fest is pretty unique, I'm not saying, something like that.
I know some of them have gone on to college and done it at the college level too. So I mean, there's some carryover from what we do here that things are.
For sure.
I've had the opportunity to be a judge at some of the DECA contests. That's, these students are amazing and what they do and the little lack of time that they have to prepare business plan, present it, all this other stuff that's loads your weight. Things they have done like Hawk Fest or anything else, they just shine. It's incredible. I do a marvelous job. So I'm always impressed with how much our students do from a public service standpoint, community service. It's just amazing. I mean, it's.
It's part of the culture now, which is really neat.
And some of these kids are involved in like four groups, so they're doing it times four, right? And so.
But what a great base.
The kids up there today are involved in other activities, sports and things, so they're doing it two, three times over. So yeah, a lot of our kids are, that's what I, we talked to our freshmen coming in, talking about, it's not whether you get involved, it's how many get involved. Because most of our kids are involved in multiple things, like everybody finds the right thing at some point. Because most of our kids are involved in multiple things, like everybody finds the, the right thing at some point. Um, and we just try to tell them to try something out there for them here, so.
Right, uh, so I, I, I heard you say some things about presenting the mural in, uh, East Gym was donated. And maybe there's some other things that are donated, are you, uh, finding people coming forward to donate, do you recruit? Try to go out and seek donations, like the STEM people, go and look for donations in the community from their local businesses. Are you able to find people and recruit for, for donations for some of these things?
Yeah, I mean, both happen, it, it depends, like, you have to have specific things that you're asking for. So yes, we do, so that sign particularly, a family came forward and said, hey, you know, we're looking to give some money, uh, you know, a family member passed away, they're giving some money for something that is tied to blank, blank, and blank, right? And so that happens, but other times, you know, through our individual clubs and activities and sports, you have parents or family members that are connected to things, and they know, okay, what are our needs are. I mean, the, the, the key is to kind of communicate what the specific needs are, right? Like, obviously, we, uh, as budgets are cut and things are, you know, tighter, we're looking for ways to still do what we can to provide the same opportunity for all our clubs and activities and sports. And so it's, you know, budgets are going down every year, so we look for different opportunities. So yes, we ask the question, sometimes they come to us, both, um, I mentioned live streaming, because we're looking at a way to potentially do more live streaming and just put, put a sponsor on there, right, put a name on the live stream. Um, there's some logistics around that, but rather than charging for a user, put a sponsor on it. So those are conversations we have, either me or friends of programs or friends of the school.
Is the, uh, memory of the fan on the east gym, is that anonymous?
Actually, it's got the name on.
I don't know what that name is though. I was in the east gym, but I didn't see.
On the side? It's written on the side.
I haven't been there though, what name is on there, Ryan?
Danny.
I thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Just want to thank Ryan for his hard work. When I started at Arrowhead seven years ago, the board president at the time commented that our activities director position is really like a principal of a whole school. And I thought, well, okay, sure, you know, from my past experience, yeah, I don't know, I don't know. And then I got here and I realized two thousand kids are involved of our twenty-one hundred in activities. And then I had Joe Reitman, who owns Mid City, he commented, did you know that your school, when I started, did you know that your school offers more athletic programs than all colleges in the state except for UW Maxum? Now, I never verified that, but that's the, that's the depth and breadth of what we offer, thirty different sports. And then another forty, fifty clubs, depending on the school year. So then I go back to the previous board president's comments of Ryan's running a school, like a principal, within a school, for sure. So thank you, Ryan, for all your work. The last portion of the superintendent report is a summary report of our parent survey results. So board members up on the screen, I'm going to do a presentation, um, but you also have the full summary report in your board packet. I'm not going to go through all of the questions, but I do want to talk through quite a bit of our survey and the process involved. So I want to start by thanking those who participated in the survey. We had seven hundred thirteen participants, and so the thoughts and opinions that are being shared are that of those seven hundred thirteen. It was not, um, it was not taken by every single parent in the school, nor was it sent out to random samplings to make it statistically accurate. So we can't consider it statistically accurate. Okay. Uh, but those seven hundred thirteen participants, uh, account for twenty-three percent return rate, which is pretty decent. It was sent to all thirty-one hundred parent, uh, email addresses. The survey was developed using a consulting expert, Darryl, who sits on our board, did some, uh, voluntary work that was many hours, and he is an expert with surveys, and that helped us become as objective and accurate as possible in our survey. And I'll just pause because he did hours of work, and if we were actually paying him as a consultant, it would have been hundreds and hundreds of dollars, maybe thousands of dollars, we do have a little arrowhead gift free.
Thank you. Well done.
In collecting, uh, responses from parents, we use Survey Monkey, a professional program, gets sent out to email addresses, one per email. We don't see those email addresses when they come in, so it is an anonymous survey. But there's a code that's assigned, and what that allows us to do is see if it's supposed to be one survey per each parent. We had some ballot stuffers, so what that means is we had twenty-five different people who took the survey more than once. Twenty or twenty-two, twenty-one of them took the survey twice. And in talking with Darryl, who's done lots of surveys before, uh, we decided it's logical, it's, it's feasible that someone could have started the survey, didn't finish it, you come back to it a week later, you re-enter and you start it all. Or it might have come to my email address and my spouse didn't receive it, so I forward mine to him, and then we both take it using the same email address. So we decided it's reasonable that there, it could show up twice, so those twenty, I believe, twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, we kept the duplicates. Now, could it be someone did it on purpose, could be, but it's not going to change the results significantly. There were some that had more than three, up to eight times. So I don't know if someone who takes it eight times is trying to make us look better than what we deserve, make us look worse than what we deserve, or just have, has a level of arrogance that they feel they're better, eight times better than the average parent. But, so those were erased. So ballot stuffers were removed, and then the analysis of the results, our administrative team received those results. Five of us, we all read them, five of us went through and reread, we divided the thirty questions into segments. So we each summarized six questions worth of data and all of the comments. After that, we pooled them all together, we reviewed again to look for, are we being objective? Are we choosing comments that represent the, uh, all the various opinions? We counted the comments, tabulated to see, just to be as objective and accurate as possible. And then reviewed once again to look for formats, were we putting the comments, were we summarizing, in a consistent manner to make it easier for the reader. So the results in your twenty-page, twenty-eight-page summary document, which almost seems ridiculous to think twenty-eight pages is a summary, but it started out about a hundred and fifty pages, so that is summarized. It's just looking now. So the three areas of highest strength from our survey, uh, were the following items. I understand my child's academic progress, about ninety-three percent of the respondents felt, yes, they agree that they understand the child's progress. Course offerings and programs offered at Arrowhead meet my child's needs and interests, almost ninety-two percent of the respondents felt that way. And that Arrowhead's enduring goals are four main goals in our focus plan, that those align with beliefs about high-quality high school education. And over eighty-nine percent of our parents agreed with that. The three areas of highest relative weakness, and I really stress the word relative, because if you look at the percentages that disagree, it's really, you know, twenty-seven percent or less. So, you know, also look at those that agree or feel neutral, still far outweigh those that disagree. But the three areas of highest relative weakness, I trust the Arrowhead School Board and the direction it's leading, uh, about twenty-seven percent disagree. When my child, oh, and I'll comment that the, the neutral, almost thirty percent were neutral. Lots of comments about too early to tell, my child's just a freshman, I haven't watched board meetings yet. So a lot of comments were, were about that in terms of being neutral. Uh, when my child is struggling with academics, they receive support, almost twenty-one percent disagreed with that. And when my child is struggling emotionally, they receive support, and nineteen and a half percent disagreed with that. So those were our three lowest areas. The survey included thirty questions, and this presentation is a review of some of the results. And so what I decided to do was highlight the results that are most, um, linked to our focus plan. You know, that's our vision, our mission, and our enduring goals, so if we think about our focus plan, what are the results of the survey? So in terms of academic type questions, one was, my child is adequately prepared for the next grade level for college, career, and life after high school, and you see we had about seventy-nine percent strongly agree. We're happy with that result. I understand my child's progress, another academic area, you already saw that, that was our highest result, it'd be ninety-three percent. And course offerings and programs, that was one you already saw as well, I believe ninety, almost ninety-two percent agree. When my child struggles with academics, they receive needed support. This was one that was lower, but still sixty-eight percent agree that their children do receive support. Twenty feel they don't. Twenty percent, I should say. My child feels physically safe at Arrowhead. In addition to academics, certainly the school safety, both physical and emotional safety is critically important. If a child doesn't feel safe, they're not going to concentrate well and learn well in school. So one question we asked was about physical safety at Arrowhead, ninety-two point eight four, so almost ninety-three percent feel that their child feels physically safe, um, with about five percent feeling they do not. And incidentally, the board has a summary of the comments made, but what, one of them that just sticks out in my mind of someone who wrote that they disagree or strongly disagree, the one parent wrote something to the effect of, they, my child does not feel safe, it's not a reflection of Arrowhead, but it's a reflection of the sign of the times with school shootings. And it just, uh, you know, kids these days, what, what they have on their minds that they have to deal with, the stressors of life, while they're trying to learn and, you know, fast-paced classes and. So we certainly want everyone to feel physically and emotionally safe here at school. My child feels socially and emotionally safe at Arrowhead, almost eighty percent agreed with that. Uh, about six percent don't know, which just personally, I feel like, go ask them. Go ask, find out, talk about it. And fourteen percent, um, disagree that their child doesn't feel socially and emotionally safe. And remember, that's of seven hundred thirteen respondents, so it's not our full parent population. Another social-emotional related question, my child feels supported, and he has a positive relationship with one or more staff members. And probably a logical question, because it did come up, was why are you asking about one staff member? Don't, don't we want our students to feel engaged with all staff members? Well, this is a, a very longstanding educational research, uh, study and result that says if the child feels connected to at least one, it doesn't have to be a teacher, it could be a custodian, it could be an aide, it could be the superintendent, it could be a board member. If you feel connected to one person, then you're more likely to graduate from high school, succeed academically, stay away from drugs and alcohol, you know, all of that. So that's where we, we use the question of with one or more. Unfortunately, eighty-five percent of our students agree that they do have that relationship with at least one person. I don't know, so again, this is the parents not knowing, um, if their child feels that way or not. And then seven and a half, seven point six percent strongly disagreed or disagree that their child doesn't feel that connection. As a staff, we actually talk about this. Adam Hirth, our principal, started an activity, and we've done things similar in the past, but very deliberately at the beginning of the school year, he had lists of every student's name, so here's all the freshmen, here's all the sophomores, and so on. And each teacher was to walk around and mark by kids' names, like ten names or up to ten names that they felt like they knew that kid. They knew that kid really well. And then we could walk around and see, are there some kids where there's lots of X's? And are there kids that have no little marks afterward? And what are we going to do about it? You know, that's the important part, that was, is that's October, maybe, early on at fall. We've brought that back, go back and add, how many kids now do you feel connected to? And those, the lines after the kids' names are getting longer and longer. So we're a big school, we've realized we're a big school, five hundred in a class, but we don't want it to feel big in terms of getting lost between the cracks, that's important to us. Um, and teachers are making deliberate efforts to do that in many ways, that's just one example. When my child struggles emotionally, they receive the needed support, and this was one of our lower areas where less than half agree or strongly agree. Um, about forty percent, oops, forty percent don't know, and about twenty percent disagree that they're not getting the emotional help that they, they need. Some of the comments were interesting, and board members, I don't know if you've had time to read some of those, but. In many of these survey questions, the differences were startling. You'd have a group of parents that would say, yes, the emotional support is amazing, the counselor, the psychologist, they're awesome. And there'd be a group like, no, you're doing absolutely nothing. And then there was a group where it would be, um, kind of the, don't you dare, school should be teaching just the basics, don't talk to my kid about anything that's social-emotional, that's my job as a parent. If my child needs, is struggling emotionally, he'll come or she'll come to me and to parents and we'll deal with it. So it's just, it's really interesting, the different, uh, opinions from just these same seven hundred people. Co-curriculars are super important here at Arrowhead, if kids are involved with a club or a sport, very much like a relationship with one staff member, they will be far more likely to be successful academically, stay out of trouble, all of that, so co-curriculars, my child has access to co-curricular opportunities that satisfy their needs and interests. Eighty-seven percent feel that that's the case, two percent weren't sure, um, and ten percent strongly disagree or disagree. And as I recall, several of the comments from, that were more negative, were more about, um, sports at Arrowhead and in general being more cutthroat. If a kid wasn't in a high-cost program, growing up through elementary, middle school, then they're not making the team, that kind of comment. Or my kid wanted to be involved but was cut from the team. Some of our sports are cut sports, some of them are not. And if, if we had the space and the people, we wouldn't cut anyone, but we only have one ice center. And we only have one football field, and we only have gymnasiums, in fact, we have kids practicing in the hallways and cafeterias. So we don't have the space to offer, uh, non-cutting sports for everything. And then just overall satisfaction, how satisfied are you with Arrowhead High School? Seventy-eight percent are very satisfied, satisfied. There were seventeen percent that were neutral, um, and again, several comments about my two kids are freshmen. The survey was given in November, too early to tell, and there was about five percent dissatisfied or very dissatisfied with Arrowhead High School. And there was about five percent dissatisfied or very dissatisfied with Arrowhead High School. So logical question, what's next? Administration will share the results, the summary with staff, which has already been done with the board, which we've done. Parents and public, it's, I just today, I put it onto our website. And in the next Arrowhead Advisor electronic newsletter that gets emailed to all families. I'll have a summary in that document and a link to the full summary package. So we're being very transparent with it. Administration will also further analyze the results. We have student survey, staff survey and parent survey data. And we've already begun, but we continue to look for trends. What do kids say compared to parents? Do they match up or are they really different? Why are they different? In the parent survey, we asked questions like, how many kids do you have at Arrowhead currently? Is your child a freshman, sophomore, junior, senior? We can go deeper into the data to see, how do parents of seniors feel? That have been here for three and a half years compared to freshman parents? Or parents that have had five or six kids that went through Arrowhead? How do they feel compared to someone who's just had one child here? Are there differences? And if there are, does that matter? Is there something we should do or know about that? We'll also be celebrating successes with the staff and public, because overall, this is a really positive survey. And of course, we'll address areas of relative weakness. We are continuously improving, we do that through our focus plan goals. And every year with those goals, we have specific strategies of what we're working on. Our strategies always include training and implementation of new practices or better practices. And in fact, I would comment, our three areas of relative weakness. Trust in the board. The board, you know better than anyone. We've had training sessions, we have more coming up. And we've, we've had more turnover, and so it's a, it's a new team. And you know that and you're working on that. So one area that was a relative weakness, I feel like you're already on it. Another area was if my child struggles academically, they're receiving the support they need. We do have a lot of support in place, but this year with COVID. Last year with COVID, there, we have more students with Ds and Xs than perhaps ever before. Certainly in the last ten years. That is of high concern to us. So we're looking at, how do we better support students? Can we find tutors, more tutors to bring in, to come in? Job market shortage, there, there's. Not a lot of people out there that want to come work in schools. So if we can't hire new people with grant money, what do we do? Can we have our existing teachers go in and support in classrooms where there's struggling students? And pay them extra to lose their prep time to do that. So we're already looking at strategic ways to start next semester with helping struggling students. And then the third area that was the relative area of weakness was supporting students emotionally. Same thing, we see that, that score, I believe, is lower than it would have been five years ago. Or hopefully that it will be five years from now. But kids have struggled with education these last couple of years because of changes and all different reasons. So what are we, what are we doing about that already? We're already on it. So I, I feel, and the board heard some of that during the report last month. Of the proactive and reactive strategies we have in place for social emotional student wellness. The, the next in-service day on January seventeenth, it's all about student mental health and wellness. So we are addressing those things, we're already planned. And it's almost gratifying if we're going to have areas that are on the weaker side. That we're already doing things to address those. And that's all I have, so thank you for your interest and attention. One piece of information that I want to share with the board. The, even before this went out to the public in your packet. I do have an open records request for the full results. So all of the raw information. That's, it's, it's publicly accessible. I'll be going through and just making sure there weren't any student names. Because those would be redacted, because it would be part of confidential student records. And I'm pretty sure there wasn't any, but anything that was confidential about individuals. So for instance, if someone wrote. Laura Myra had COVID and spread it around the school. Well, that's a medical thing we wouldn't be sharing, so that would be redacted. I don't think there was anything, but I'll go through and double check. We asked in the survey that people refrain from using personal names. And said that those personal names would not be put in the summary that will be very public. But there were personal names used. And so, you know, those will be public. And I will let, the board has, well, I should say that the board has already seen all the comments. Within the question about the board, but not all of those comments. Anyway, what I'll be doing is where there were names used. I'll do a courtesy message to those people, like just so you know, teacher X, your name is going to be out there. Some of them are really great comments, that they'll be proud. And some, you know, some are judgments, judgments that are not so, so nice. So just so you're aware, that will be provided to the, the remister sometime in the next couple of weeks.
Laura from, now for questions?
Sure.
No, thank you for putting this together again. From the data that you see on your staff, was there something that was like the biggest surprise that you saw from the data from the parents?
For me, I think the biggest surprise wasn't necessarily the content or results. It was more just tremendous differences. You know, really differentiated variety, black and white. There was, like CRT has been such a hot topic. Comments from, don't you dare teach CRT, you're, you're sneaking it in. You're very frustrated comments to comments like, it's not being taught in any high school in the state. Why is this coming up again? I, like, wow, you should talk to you and figure that out and let us just educate. So I think that was the biggest surprise. It was more variety extremes than what I was expecting.
And I do like this, you know, in terms of referencing the report, just because for us as a board, to make informed decisions, I think this is great. Of course, this is coming from a research background, but I think it is, it helps, empowers us to know what parents and students are feeling. So I hope that we do this annually. Or at least some of those where we see the problem areas, emphasizing just to see, are we moving the needle? In a positive or negative direction.
Right.
And then the other thing too, I know we had a sample size of seven hundred and twenty. I think we did ask the question, how many years have you had?
Yes.
Kids at Arrowhead? So maybe you look at like those ones that are, you know, one or two years in. And just see, what is that difference of perception? So if it is like a new freshman orientation, taking that information to, you know, alleviate uncertainty.
Right.
For those new parents coming in, or parents that have freshmen.
Right. Yeah, very informative. Already, just reading a hundred and fifty pages of comments, very informative.
Did you say that the student survey was completed already?
That was given to the board last month. So Adam Holt did that survey. It wasn't a thirty-question survey like this, it wasn't about overall satisfaction. It was based on the youth risk behavior survey that's given to two grade levels, freshmen and juniors. And then we extended that with some Arrowhead questions, because we wanted that data to come back sooner.
I didn't know, there was another one that was more.
We have a senior survey that we do give students regarding their academic career experiences, aspirations.
Yep.
recommendations for things that would support their learning.
Wait one, one second. Okay.
And then our staff survey was approximately the same time as the parent survey. And at your personnel committee meeting tomorrow morning at seven AM, we'll talk about the staff survey. Which we do not plan to do the same year from now on. Staff survey, we've done every two to three years. This was a lot, I mean, honestly, putting the survey together, developing the questions. Which we also looked at professional school surveys and companies. To use questions that they weren't just made up in our heads. There were, I, between development of the survey and the analysis. I would say, and for all people combined, easily sixty, eighty, ninety hours. For the parent one, staff one wasn't that many, but. But we won't do the two surveys at the same.
But I also want to give a shout out to, I worked, when I was developing the survey, I worked for the group here, but. I worked with a lot, her and I, just get her activated. Launching it, so I know she, she spent a lot of time.
Yes.
Just.
And thanks again to you, because if you hadn't been there to help, then imagine how much more time it would have been running on there.
Just an observation. It, it does appear that the response is coming back from both the parent survey. As well as some of the responses back from the staff engagement survey. Are very consistent with, I think, what they're monitoring nationally in terms of mental health. And so while I think Arrowhead is no different than any other high school in the country, probably. There are certainly the comments, you know, from the staff, the staff relative to student engagement. And issues of the kids feeling burned out and the comments relative to their state of anxiety. Very similar to, you know, the question asked, when my child is struggling emotionally, they receive the support that they need. Parents are concerned, I think there's an overwhelming amount of stress here. Not sure if they're getting everything addressed. And again, you know, that really is in keeping with national stats for anxiety and depression. And, and fear and certain suicide. So it is something that I'm glad that we're doing all these surveys. I think we're getting a lot of data that's very, very comparative and actionable.
For a quick question on the, in general, we're a teacher shortage.
Yes.
We've also got this, so forth, and there was talk of the shortage of tutors and substitute teachers, all this. I think in elementary schools, there is a good bit of perception of parent volunteers helping teach things. Is there any of that going on? Is it possible? I understand that at higher levels, parents are, are people trained to be able to teach a calc class or tutor a calc class, whatever. But is there anything can be done with parent volunteer?
We have tried, we put it in our newsletter a couple of times. Last year, we had, we had more reception to coming in and helping. That actually, parent volunteers actually helped save the day last year. When we had three or four teachers who had, because of medical reasons, had to teach remotely. Like from a different area in the building, alone and secluded. And then we have a substitute, a supervisory aide. So it wasn't a teacher, they were there with the kids supervising, the teachers on the screen, that person was helping. Three or four community members stepped up to do that, that really helped us keep afloat in those classrooms. One of those people has been in the hospital for four months now. One of the people loved it so much that she's getting her teaching license and she's fully employed at one of the K eight schools nearby. And I don't recall the other two, but it helped a lot last year, this year we don't have as many. As many substitutes.
So you would want them if you could get them?
Yes.
The case?
Yes.
I agree, the, the survey, I think, is wonderful. I was quite, I read all the comments, the summarization of the comments, all the actual comments to say, but. It was striking how many were similar. And it was also striking how the disparity between, between them in the same question, it's like, okay, which is it? There's gotta be a middle ground here somewhere. Why are we having seen such a diversity on the, on the answers or whatever? Yeah, I think very, very, very helpful. You know, Laura and I talked about, I asked her, how many hours do you think you have into this survey? She gave me a number, I said, no way. There's no way it's that low.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just the hours that were spent putting the survey together. Making sure that a decent survey question was asked, neutral fashion, that kind of stuff. And then to go through and, I know Laura had read every, every response at least twice. A hundred and fifty-two pages, I bet. I know a whole administration team has two, but they didn't necessarily read every one of those things. I mean, just the amount of time to read all those. And then to come up and summarize them and categorize them, that these, these six are very similar and that kind of stuff. And it's a tremendous amount of work. They took great strides in trying to make sure things weren't biased from the way they're reading it, presenting it, that kind of stuff. So really appreciate the, the amount of effort and time that Carol was taking to put it together, so very well done. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. And we'll move on. Okay, indications, comments from members of the public. We have three people signed up. As we have in the past, we'll be limited to typically a three-minute presentation. And there's some leeway on that, especially since we only have three and not thirty-three. So, but. Anyway, please state, state your name for us for the record and. Try to limit your, your speech. Again, general comments, the board will not be responding to it if it's not an opportunity for us to discuss items. It's not an opportunity for the public to make comments on, you know, anything that they want to talk about, doesn't necessarily have to be anything that's on the agenda. If there's something on the agenda, there may be an opportunity for us to address it at that point, when we get to that point in the agenda, so. First up was Kathy Adamson. Evening Kathy.
I, I, I'm eight, so I turned this one thing off for you guys. But I'm also kind of cheap, so I didn't make enough copies. I want you guys to have them too. We have. Okay, I'm Kathy Adamson. Thanks for your time and following you. I really appreciate everything that you do for this small community. So increasingly educators face difficult issues like gender and race-based bullying, identity, fairness, racism and tolerance, issues like that. And I'm going to share a resource that you guys may find helpful. Fair stands for the Foundation Against Intolerance and Racism. And that's where the resources come from that I'm going to present to you. A cynical and intolerant orthodoxy is infiltrating some schools across the country. And a fair foot, the. This orthodoxy requires us to identify ourselves and each other based on immutable characteristics. Curiously, skin color, gender and sexual orientation, pitting us against one another and diminishing what it means to be human. And in reaction to that, opposite radical ideologies are gaining momentum. And radicalism is bad no matter what direction it comes from. Fair compassionately opposes all cynical and intolerant ideologies. And I'm not saying that there isn't intolerance ideology at Arrowhead. I'm just saying that there is one way we can guard against it and we can empower it to address it, should they encounter it. So you can go to the next page. Fair is aligned, I believe, with Arrowhead's focus plan. I think everyone in this room and at the school genuinely want to help our kids become productive, kind, responsible civil members of society. Generally want to help our kids become productive, kind, responsible civil members of society. And we have an opportunity at Arrowhead to be a leader in this region of the country and in the nation with fair. I know that superintendents of other schools in Southeastern Wisconsin are showing interest in fair. Fair's consultants have already helped corporations and schools around the country. You can go to the next page. Fair is a nonpartisan multinational organization that uses a pro-human approach to solve problems. And by pro-human, we mean that we advocate for one human race, universal civil rights and liberties. And we compassionately oppose racism and intolerance. And everything fair does is rooted in dignity in our common community. You can go to the next page. These are the three pillars of fair. Everything at fair is based on these, and this is what we mean when we say pro-human. You know the next page, I'm trying to go fast. So these are fair's principles of peaceful change, and they are based on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s principles of nonviolence. So read through through those when you have a moment, and I think you'll see the fair line with Arrowhead's focus plan. You can go to the next page. Fair offers many nonpartisan solutions to today's problems. The ones I'm going to discuss tonight are the Fair Story, which is their K through twelve curriculum, and Fair Diversity Training. So the first is Fair Story, and this is their K through twelve curriculum. It's based on fairness, understanding, and a common humanity, there are three pillars. It's designed to inspire inquiry and constructive dialogue around difficult and contentious issues. Expose students to different sources and different perspectives, help students think critically. And empower students with positive ways to confront dehumanizing ways of living. The Fair Story curriculum is an honest, fact-based, optimistic account of America's past and presence. And it teaches students to think for themselves. It's off the shelf, ready for teachers. So teachers do not have to overhaul their current lesson plan. They can pick and choose modules and lesson plans from Fair's curriculum and add it to their existing plan. Fair consultants are available to help assist teachers, but the Fair curriculum is available to everyone right now, online or free. You don't need a consultant helper if you don't want it. Uh you can go to the next page. So the next is the diversity training. So I just want to stop and say that. The definition of diversity for fair, diversity can cause some, some problems nowadays. But the definition that fair uses for diversity does not just mean people who look different physically. They they include the whole definition of diversity of humanity, which includes how we look. But also I have included here ancestry, ethnicity, sex, gender, sexual orientation, ability, religion, creed. You know, perspective, all of the things that make us who we are as individuals, many different facets. So that's what fair means when they use the word diversity. So Fair offers in-person or virtual pro-human training for teachers, staff, administrators, and board members. They also offer corporate training, and these, these trainings meet state standards. You can go to the next page. The point of these trainings is to foster social cohesion among the team members. It shows teachers, staff, and administrators how to model constructive interactions for students. And it creates a focal point of fairness, understanding, and humanity for the school community. The next page just has additional resources that I didn't want to go into tonight for the sake of time, but I'd be happy to discuss any of these with you. So on the last page, just some resources for you, I'd be happy to discuss fair at length. Longer or do a longer presentation for you about what they have to offer, or even better, Fair has a marketing director. For Fair Story and Fair Diversity, and she's really, really great, and would be able to answer all your questions. So thanks for your time. I keep these because I'm a lot of time and money on them, and I don't want them back. Do what you want on them, hopefully use them as a resource, but I I don't want them back.
So how would you get introduced to Fair and what's for you?
I follow John McQuarrie, I don't know if anyone is familiar with him. I follow him on Twitter and I've read some of his books, and he is one of the board members of Fair. And I just like that they offer a nonpartisan solution to a lot of problems of contemporary society. They're also working in the medical field, and they do things with corporations, and they're just very much focused on Martin Luther King Jr.'s principles. To me, I think that's an answer to a lot of things that we're facing today, so I just wanted to expose you guys to. What's there because you're busy and probably don't have time to look at all this stuff.
In an ideal world, what would you like to see the board and the administration take away from this presentation?
To know that this curriculum exists, and if teachers are struggling with. How to deal with some of these issues, which from past board meetings, it seems like, like, you know, there's some issues with with gender and race-based bullying. And things like that, and teachers may be in situations where they're not fully knowledgeable. Or they don't really know exactly how to address them, and I know that the school does lots of trainings for them. And I'm not saying this should replace any of that, I'm just saying alongside of those things, that you guys see value in this. It it's just an extra tool that the school could use. Either for just training for the staff and teachers or as part of the curriculum. They also offer an ethnic studies course, which some states require high school students to have this type of training. I don't think Wisconsin does, but it's a semester or year-long course that meets state standards for that, so they just have a lot of. Really, really big resources. They have an educators forum, which is for teachers, administrators, board members. They meet, I think it's once a week, so you can meet with people from all over the country virtually, and you can. Share ideas and discuss problems and find out how other people are handling things, and it's all based on. Civil discourse and respecting everybody's opinion.
Thank you Kathy.
Quick question, do you know of any other high schools and states that have implemented?
I don't know if I implemented them, but I know that. Some have shown interest, and I'm not sure if I can say who, do you know what I mean? But I do know that there are some that definitely know about it and others who are showing interest.
And you said that there were free resources online for, that you can go into and, and you know, some self-study courses and stuff like that, or?
The curriculum is totally online, so the website is fairforall.org, it's in the bottom right-hand corner. And in there, it's pretty easy to navigate, you can find the curriculum, and it's, it's all that, like, you could go tonight and read through the lesson plan. And it's totally free, you don't have to be a member of Fair to access them.
John Nordbrass. Evening, John.
Evening, and happy new year to everyone. Great, the mince pies that my mother-in-law's been making me have taken their toll. Happy to be here, everyone here. It's another year and another COVID variant, unfortunately. Didn't hear that, I get the pleasure, the pleasure of the numbers. From what we're seeing here, but I know that school districts across our area are struggling with this, and it's not, it's obviously. Child mortality or youth mortality, it's, it's the disruption to tests and activities that we heard about. So we've got another year, but we've got a chance to sharpen our response to this weight. One of the things that I would like to see happen, however, is that the standards for what inputs support our decision-making here. They, they need to be carefully established, to be made, made explicitly shared as, as, as an understanding of the foundation that you're going to use to make decisions. On the one hand, our district has good data and information and access to guidance from the Wisconsin DHS, the county, and the CDC. To combine with the statistics that the district's gathering itself. And that's not necessarily going to be the only information, but it should form the foundation. On the other hand, so we start the new year and I've made a resolution to, to raise these things, we need to push back on bad information and data sources. That created noise in the system in twenty twenty-one. We can't entertain suggestions. That we engage with information from groups like America's Frontline Doctors, Time to Free America, or the MacIver Institute. And fortunately, and this is serendipity, I would include fair. I am a, this sends a big red flag to me. It's got some lovely packaging to it. I've got quibbles with Steven Pinker, who is behind there. With Christopher Rupo, who is with the Manhattan Institute and behind CRT, is an advisor to fair. I've got big quibbles with that. And I've got huge concerns when the Wisconsin chapter of fair has links to far-right organizations like Sheriff Clark's Rise Up. Uh America and No Left Turn in Education. So this is a red flag for me. As, as nice as the handouts are, this is an example of just such a thing. The safety and well-being of our students and teachers and staff can't be informed by that kind of stuff. And we need to draw a line on certain phrases like masks don't work, because they do, the focus on mortality rates is the only measure of severity. It isn't, or the claim that people want something like a contingency plan are, are, for the school are living in fear. We are not, I am not. I've been heartened by stories of my boys in the school district saying, you know, they decided they're all going to start wearing the masks. But they know that you can't, it's not as effective when not everyone's doing it, but they see the impact, more and more kids coming out, especially, you know, exam week. It's very concerning. So as, as, as a board member, one last point, so as a parent and a member of this community, I would like the board to keep all the options on the table. For navigating this last phase, and that may include a target period of masking, encouraging more testing and quarantining. Positive, thank you for that email that you sent out the other day, if they're showing symptoms, to, to sort of quarantine, and yes, having the option. With a plan to shift to a virtual mode of instruction for a limited time if necessary. I'm very concerned about what I'm seeing, I'm very concerned about the qualitative data that I'm seeing, hearing from my kids and their friends. Our kids know what's at risk, they're wondering what the adults are going to do, so agree those data standards, please. Put all those pandemic measures back on the table, it would be a fool for any, any leader in an organization to take options like that. We don't know. So those pandemic measures have to be back with him, let's figure out how to help the kids, teachers, and staff get through this next wave.
Thank you, John, and happy new year to you too, sir. Enjoy that mince pie. Evening, Lynn.
So over the fall, the board published its special control and mitigation policy. I want to thank the board for the team to update the parents and to, with the further email on the website and everything that you've done with it. I want to say they encourage you to stay with this policy in place, especially the mitigation strategies that were added due to the federal grants that were given to the school. It's important to be able to keep our kids in school and learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that hasn't signed up, would you like to? Amy?
I guess I just want to talk to the board about the community forum discussion that's going to be happening again tonight. I was here in December, and I know a lot of time was spent on trying to figure out, like, how to go about doing something. I know I'm only one parent out of thirty-one hundred, so this is just my opinion. I know you guys are thinking of doing the idea of setting aside separate nights to pick different topics, which I think is great. And I'm not, I'm not against it, but I wonder if what a lot of parents that I have spoken to. And I don't know what you've heard from, from parents, but I think. It's being made more complex than it needs to be. I think what parents are looking for. What I'm looking for is more of just, I don't know if any of you ever attended a Merton board meeting. What they do is just, I think, really works well in the community, and if you really feel a good communication with the board members. Is right before the board meeting, they set aside an hour of time, and the community can come in, and they can speak to the board. Ask questions, there's conversations going on, it leads to other conversations in the group amongst other parents. They've just been very, I think they've been great. Then when the board meeting starts, you're, you're not having as many people speaking about one thing. A lot of times, a lot of them are learning, able to communicate their feelings heard. You know, we all can send you a facility email, emails, and I'm sure you're all tired of reading, and there's many emails. And I think if parents just had that opportunity, that if something was on their mind that they wanted to talk to you about. And maybe have a little bit of exchange back and forth, but they might not be getting an email. To have that opportunity to come before the board meeting and do that. And like I say, not necessarily meeting a topic, because the topics are fluid from one month to another. It's not like. You know, it's just this month, it's going to be this or this, you know, we don't know. You know, everything is so fluid, and I think it's just, it can be a lot easier. So I know you guys are going to be discussing it tonight, and I just, this is my opinion, so. And then I wanted to thank you for keeping the kids in school, listening tonight to the kids present their. The save, first of all, I wasn't even aware of that program, so I am really excited to share that with other parents. And see if we can get some of their relatives to do some interviews, but then hearing about, you know, sports and the clubs and, you know. All of these successes, and these kids are back in doing these things, and this is helping their mental health incredibly. I know everyone is still worried about physical health, but mental health is really getting pushed under the rug. And these kids being able to do these activities again, I think is really making a difference. And I think that in turn is going to help them succeed better in school, bring, maybe bringing these brains back up. Just mental health can affect so much, so I just want to thank you for continuing to look at all of the information.
Thank you, Amy. We agree. It's good to have the kids in class, no doubt about it. Appreciate your comments. Anybody else?
For the response rate, for the response rate? I think, yeah, the response rate, I think, is, I mean, we always want to have more, but in terms of, like, statistically looking at the percentages there. And plus, we had seven hundred people respond, that if we had all thirty-one hundred respond, I don't see those percentages shift. That much enough, that's why, from what I've experienced of that, so, of the numbers that Laura had there, I feel, you know, of those seventy, seventy percent. With the response rate, I. I think what ideally we would like to, you know, more is always better. But I think when you have, you know, seven hundred responses, I think that is strong, you know. And if we get more than that, is, you know, great. What I would do is by caution, it's like, okay, what if this goes down? You know, I think a sampling of five hundred is good overall for us to make informed decisions.
No, similar to the parent survey, where there's a twenty-eight page summary that's linked to the board agenda. Linked to the Personnel Committee Agenda, which is actually tomorrow morning, is a summary document of the staff survey results. Yes. Yes.
Anybody else?
Give just one. I wanted to talk a little bit more about the survey, I think it's great.
Can you get your name, please?
Yeah, Tim Evers. Go tens in the school, I'll have a kid in the school. But I, I've been a part of surveys in the workplace for well over fifteen years, I get graded. Or my bonuses are based off of how well moved and you get a lot of surveys, so I, I get a lot of. Spend a lot of time reading and then looking at the surveys, so I think it's great that you guys do this. Couple of things that I'd recommend, and this is some of the things that is in my workplace, we've evolved our surveys over time, is. I didn't hear this in the, in the presentation, but it's good to not change these questions in the next time. Want to make that this as a foundation to, to build on. So hopefully the, the survey questions remain the same, although I would look to maybe add one, especially based. So hopefully the, the survey question remain the same, although I would look to maybe add one, especially based off of the, the take rate of this initial survey. And, and one of them being, uh, on, uh, just as, as a simple kind of formulated question would be, did you take the survey the last time? So that you can always build on and see any repetition of, or be able to draw some correlation between the differences between one survey and the next. And then the, the other recommendation I would have on the, I think it was the last question, if I remember, I took the most right on overall satisfaction of, of the experience. I would change that too, because what we learned and what, what I've learned over the many years of, of doing surveys in the workplace is you tend to answer that kind of very generally. So I would change that to, would you recommend a friend or family member to enroll their child in things? And that really changes the context of how they think about the Arrowhead or, or the high school in this space as, as, um, something that they would recommend or not. It really changes the context of how they answer that question.
Can I answer? I, I agree. I, what I would recommend in the future, I think you keep the overall satisfaction, but in addition.
That'd be constant.
That we do, just because we would have that benchmarked. I agree with the likelihood to recommend. It is like the more actionable thing of during that project to be highest of.
Exactly. And, and so just a recent example, I've received survey results, uh, in my workplace. And where we were beginning to look at all of the other scores, column scores or survey results related to those other questions, then we started generally think this, this is very good results. Then you, then you look at that one last question of would you recommend? And you saw a very different, a very low score relative to everything else. And it makes you start to think about the, I call it the negative or more negative swayed comments on, all right, pay different attention to those as a way to get real actionable items out. So what's driving that?
And actually, and other things of adding the other things, like, are you planning to keep your kids at Arrowhead next year? That's another actual, it's like, okay, what's that trigger of why are they thinking about maybe going to a private school or get for them?
Yep, exactly.
So those are things that we can consider down, down the road too, because our big thing is retaining those, uh, students here, staying in the district.
Right, and as well as getting more people to recommend. So let's recommend folks to move into. Yeah, exactly. Yep. Yeah, that's all I wanted to add. Thanks.
Are you? Yes, sir.
How come we're not following CDC recommendation for COVID vaccination at school? And I would like to know, I like to question, does anyone here or anyone know how many students, what percentage of students are vaccinated at school? Do we have your name, please? Ronnie. My son has been notified three times of full contact so far. And, uh, we haven't, I haven't tested lately. But, uh, you know, we, last year, you know, when everyone was wearing a face mask, we not only didn't get COVID, we didn't get the flu or a cold at all, I found. But this year, as soon as school started, we got sick. My son, if it wouldn't have been over the weekend, he wasn't at the whole week of school. You know, and, uh, we got sick and I started coughing and his mother didn't get it. I, I don't know why, but she was at work. I'm retired. But, uh, you know, uh, we've been sick on and off this year more often. I'm starting to wear a face mask again. We're all vaccinated. But, uh, people are getting sick again. Now, but I was wondering, does anyone, do you know what percentage of students are vaccinated at school? Have you put that in your survey? And if not, why not?
We, we do not know the exact percentage of, uh, vaccinated students at Arrowhead. It's, it's actually private medical information that we're not asking. There are several families that will share whether they are or not. If Arrowhead is similar to countywide, our, every other week now, the superintendents in Waukesha County meet with the public health director, Ben Jones. And now it's been probably a month since he's shared the vaccination data, but in our county, teenagers, about sixty percent are vaccinated. So whether Arrowhead is similar to the county average or not, I don't know. I can share that we have a lot of sickness around here. I just updated the website
I thought.
this afternoon. So since January third, coming back from winter break, we've had about a hundred and forty positive COVID cases. And we estimate that less, normally we would estimate less than half of the people experiencing symptoms actually get tested. Now, I believe we've had a lot more testing lately and the county health department confirms there's been a lot more testing lately around the holidays because of travel, because of seeing elderly family members. So whether or not we have more positive COVID cases or we just have more testing and therefore more positive cases revealed, I don't know that. So about a hundred and forty in the last two weeks. For comparison, all of last school year, we had two hundred seventy one cases confirmed positive. And in terms of overall sickness absences, which to me, that's what we're, I personally feel more concerned about how many students are out absent, sick versus COVID tested or not. Last week, we averaged a hundred and thirty seven students absent per day with illness. And this week, I just asked today, how's this week looking? And we're averaging one fifty six. So the, it's a lot of kids considering three years ago, that was about twenty students per day. That's the bad news. The good news is from last week to this week, it's not, you know, we, we're not at ten percent of our population out ill. There's a lot of sickness. It's, it's certainly spreading around. We hear from the health department, the new Omicron variant. It tends to come fast and leave fast. It's, for most people, it's less severe. It's more of a up in your head sinus thing versus the Delta variant that's down in lungs that caused people more problems. So that's, that's from our health department call this morning and last Wednesday. We actually met two weeks in a row because schools are, are experiencing a lot of illness and kids, a lot of absences and I would say our, our key concern here at Arrowhead, as you've heard a lot, we want to stay open for in-person instruction. We can't do that if we don't have enough staff members. So currently we have eighty nine students that are COVID positive active cases and we have staff members. I shared with the board maybe a week ago, we had a day where we had fourteen teachers or staff members out and ten of the positions were uncovered. That's what's, that's what's like killing us. There's just not enough substitutes. And so our teachers are doing their own six classes. Then they're using their prep times to be in other classes. So they're not having time to grade papers and prep and get a break and lunch and all of that. So I do, I do worry about the workload on our, on our teachers right now. But we're staying open.
Shouldn't everyone be wearing a face mask in the school? Is it going to be mandatory?
That's, that's not an administration decision. That's a school.
Yeah, well, I think the school has been negligent. I, I think it's been negligent in the process. And, uh, look at what Tommy Thompson, I mean, he, he knows the percentage of, of, uh, of vaccinated students in every campus in the state. And, uh, you want to build in there, as far as I know, you have to wear a face mask. So I mean, something needs to be done, you know? I mean, you have to take action on this. So you have to be proactive, I think. And there are other ones that's going around too. Like I said, we got sick right away this year. And, uh, it's, it's not a good thing. I go in there, any medical officer has to wear a face mask. You know, and, uh, a teacher died, you know, a lot, you know, on you. Uh, a special needs teacher, she was in her thirties. She died of COVID. She was pregnant. She had three children, left her three children and husband behind. Uh, and they, they delivered the, the baby, still born, so two victims right there. You know, I mean, that looks like a lawsuit to me. And I, I don't, uh, you know, one of our surgeons was sued over a successful surgery. And, uh, by Havis. You know, it doesn't take much to get sued sometimes and, uh, that's very stressful, very, very.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Appreciate the comments.
Well, thank you for the question. Hey, just a little clarification on the absentee thing. So that when you're coming out the COVID dashboard, when I say the number of absentee, are those like all people that are all for any reason or are they just the sick one?
No, it's illness. And I have it labeled as illness or sickness absences. Those aren't, that's, that's at college visits.
Right, that was my question.
Purely sick. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, move on. All right, curriculum.
Your question, too.
Our next meeting's not until February twenty fourth. So, yeah.
All right, thank you. Station. Scott.
We will, um, try to determine, um, meeting date for our next, uh, finance meeting. Within the next day or two, we're probably going to be working around the personnel meeting. So we'll, uh, determine it kind of around that sometime in February. I think personnel's meeting on first or the third and the tenth, whatever, which would be maybe the opposite of one of those. We also will be attempting to reach, uh, folks who did our audit a few months back and have that report to us during that meeting.
And Jeff, I presume you're starting to crank up your budgeting for next year already?
Yep, we'll probably be talking about that at that. So, okay. Financial planning.
All right, thank you. Uh, Billy Rounds, there are no meetings also. Our next meeting is February second. Personnel, Jim.
Uh, we met on the fifteenth. Almost all of you were there. And so, you know, there was a closed session dealing with the, like, code of conduct appeal and administrative contracts. Uh, the second part of that will come forward to the board, be first.
And next meeting is tomorrow morning.
Meeting is tomorrow morning. So philosophically, what I tried to do in discussions with Laura is map out a review of personnel, uh, in, at their Arrowhead district. And so we're taking this in little bites. Tomorrow is a review of the staff survey, uh, look at the, uh, available labor market and, uh, and kind of what, what we're doing with the people that we have in love and those that we want to. And so we'll take this a little bit at a time, uh, month by month. And make it, it would be great to see all of your shiny faces. But this is not an emergency, all hands on deck kind of meeting. It's just good information.
Right, thank you. Policy.
Meaning to be determined.
Right. We should have this kind of shirt. That you mean reports all the time. Wouldn't get much done. Okay, WSB, uh, the, the state conference is coming up next, uh, week, nineteen, twenty first. What I did is I had, uh, years ago, Mr. Ziegler used to hand out the, yeah, the, uh,
Resolution list.
Yeah. Project, proposed resolutions. I think that seemed to last year and this year is very, very much trimmed down from what it has been in the past. I mean, in the past, it could be thirty, forty, fifty resolutions of, most of them were dry as grass. But what I did is I had them out, uh, there are some that were approved, uh, to be part of the resolution that came in by the deadlines where they were supposed to be submitted. There are about half dozen of them. I think they came and passed the deadline and the committee overall looked down and decided that they warranted being added on the burden, for, on an emergency basis. Uh, so there's a second packet there of those. So if you take a look at those, if you have any comments, uh, or feelings on one way or the other, if you give back to me on that, that'd be great. To help advise as far as how I'll be voting on, on those resolutions. Uh, there are a couple, I think three of them that, uh, Jeff and I went over that were specifically, specifically dealt with financing. I called on Jeff on his expertise on those, whether they're worthy of supporting so on. So in all cases, he said, yes, so. That's it. And the, uh, believe that the conference is going to be streamed. So you can certainly tune into it if you care to. Bring, bring the sessions. Boy transactions, resignations and retirements. You have a couple resignations. And some retirements. So we have three resignations, four, we have four retirements, uh, coming up for next year. So this is approval or motion for approval of those.
Can you sweet talk the Chinese teacher again?
No, but she appreciated last year's conversation, but knew that this year it is the right time. These are all tough to bill.
Yes, they are.
I would approve, I would move that we approve them with regrets in each case.
Yeah.
Find, find people that are really using and, uh, it's going to be challenging to find new people.
Okay. We have a second.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, signed by Amy, and for discussion.
Uh, so I know about three words in about two dozen different languages.
You're hired.
I mostly know how to say thank you and order a beer. But if I remember right, she was thank you in Chinese and stuff, it's passed as well.
I know Rachel now. How many years has they been with us? Anybody know? At least thirty.
Sorry, I was just going to say for she, just a little anecdotal story, she, she, when I was in China, if you pronounce it just a little bit off, it means to urinate. So you have to make sure. Thank you and to urinate.
Thank you. Where's the beer and where's the bathroom?
How long has Jim been with us? Not as long as he's, but close.
He's with Dr. Phil's here.
Okay.
Doctor to, uh,
And then the doctor.
Well, true.
All right, all those, all those parents say aye. Both carried. Okay, contracts and letters of appointment. Uh, we also have a couple, uh, primarily administrative contract renewals. Okay. And then, yes, in fact, that's all it is. And the farm matures. As well as Kevin looks on who is not administrative, but, uh, actors, industry contract. Or a motion.
Oh, there's two. Okay.
Right.
Yes.
My best. There's some curricular hires.
Oh, that's right.
They're on the same line, but that.
There's two different documents on this.
I'd make the motion to do the contract.
Okay, by suicide, right? By Chris to approve the contracts.
I guess just one question regarding these, the, um, there was a question that I raised about the Greg, which work contract was their determination of no action was needed on that.
Correct.
Okay.
And I believe we reviewed that with attorney Bob Butler as well with the contract. There's no additional contract being offered or extended because he's retiring. But we have this letter of resignation and retirement dated June thirtieth. And they, and the contract that he has ends this school year as well. So we're clean. And just for board members as a reminder, Greg Wacherek, our previous principal is the president of the, the National Secondary School Principal Association. And so he still is officially on our rolls, but that organization pays his full salary. And we just wanted to make it crystal clear that he was retiring when he's done with that position. He's also done with Arrowhead and so forth. So we are solid.
All right, a motion of a second. Hey, all those in favor say hi. Sure, thank you. All right. Discussion action to accept donations. We have two donations, one from G N H Industries or Technology Department and $5,000, one from Dorna Manufacturing for a thousand dollars, also for the tech department.
Some will be
Okay. No, I'm sure not. Do we know if those were earmarked for something specific or those?
Those are matching grants to the O G sellers. Foundations.
So.
They're doing really well on it.
Yeah, that's a nice article, a paper about a couple. All right, all those in favor say hi. Sure, thank you. Okay, next item, discussion action on regular educational enrollment space availability. What's that time of year where we have to approve whether or not we have space for open enrollment students for next year? And we actually take this in two phases, one for regular ed and one for specialized. So the first one is the open enrollment toward the regular education. What's the
Should I read the whole thing? I'm going to approve the filing new open enrollment seats in the regular education program for the 2022, 2023 school year, 133 in grade nine, 76 in grade 10, 55 in grade 11, and 72 in grade 12, as well as the currently attending open enrollment students.
All right, well, by Amy saying my suit, approve the open enrollment seats stated and proposed a further discussion. Is that just determined by how many students are in the classes currently and how many are
Right, right. We use a formula. It's, I have it noted there. It's probably not fully explained, but in general, we look at every grade level. What's a class that the majority of students take? So if you look, for instance, ninth grade, based on the number of English nine classes, 70% of the kids take that course. We have 496 projected students next year. If we have 16 sections of that class with a capacity of, and 30, the capacity numbers you see are specifically for open enrollment. And the law allows for that. That doesn't mean for classes where locked into 30 or we can go to 31 kids, we can have 28 kids. It's specifically for open enrollment, but it's a, it's an objective formula of how to determine how many seats you have. Elementary level, it's, it's just different and easy because you have fifth graders and here's how many, and that's it. High school, when you have 190 courses, we have to use some sort of objective formula, and this is the one that's recommended by the Department of Public Instruction to take a commonly attended class at each grade level and use that as a kind of a regulator or deciding factor for regular education.
Yeah, the actual calculation of that is, they deal with the capacity, which in this case a grade nine is 30, 30 in a classroom minus the projected students of the 347, then times the number section of 16, total available seats. Then you take the difference that could be the enrollment capability. All right, we have a motion, a second to approve, a further discussion. All those in favor say hi.
Hi.
Sure. All right, discussion action on special education, open enrollment, open enrollment face availability for special ed.
And I see we've got zero open enrollment seats for special education, but eight for speech and language. Can you explain that?
Yeah, so the calculations because of the job titles and different for special education, case managers and speech and language pathologists. There's two different categories where you could have space in one program versus the other because the teachers and what they do were so differentiated. So like Jill Borman, Amy Finn, teach speech and language. There are the two teachers or the F T is actually smaller than that because Jill part time, they're the 1.45 F Ts that do speech and language. And then there's a loving, loving case managers that work with special education.
So if a child were to attempt to open enroll at Arrowhead and their I E P only required speech, speech and language support, we'd be able to accept eight of those kinds of kids, but if they need anything beyond speech and language support, any cognitive disabilities or physical disabilities, then they would not be
Right. Most of our speech and language services comes as a related service that contains a student. Isn't special education under a different category other than speech and language, but they research, receive speech and language services as part of their disability related needs. We have very few that are actually speech and language only.
Do we have any? Do we have any that are
Yeah, there's like less than and that holds pretty consistent. The, I guess it is of note that if you look at the total factor score, last year at this time, we were talking about how far over we were of the caseload score, caseload score set at 26. And we were nearing a point where not only would we be looking at adding, maybe justifiably so, an 11 special education teacher, or I'm sorry, 12 special education teacher, but we were nearing the point where we could say we should add two special education teachers. We had numbers for the longest time, we were in declining enrollment, but our special education needs were going up. This is the first year that we've seen that go down. So we've gone down to 287.9 for full factor score. And we're much closer now to the caseload score. And what happened was the difference between those two numbers from last year, this year is 27.5. The loss between in factor scores of graduation and then incoming freshman is 22.6. That leaves us at 4.9 of a difference. And then there was a change in our freshman rating. So the Peter schools rated a some of our freshmen different than what we would rate them. And so that changed 4.1. And then we had a point eight change within students that were here, there are some of their needs declined, so we attributed a lower ratings score to them. And that's what makes up the, the difference. So right now we're at 26.2, so we're still above that threshold. Next year, the Peter schools are predicting another low incoming special education class. So they said that their current seventh grader, right now, the numbers are pretty low for special education. So next year, we might get to the point where we're actually looking at having open enrollment seats for students in special education, but then the Peter schools say that then sixth grade, fifth grade, they're seeing where their normal numbers have been. So I think we got two low years, eighth grade and seventh grade currently that are gonna have lower numbers in special education. And they say that their number will basically go forward. So there's kind of an anomaly dip right now.
So I mean, I guess I will repeat for the benefit of our board members who weren't here last January or every January before that. And we get to vote on this stuff every year and every year I find out that Arrowhead, like a lot of schools discriminates against specialized kids. We open up 335 seats to ordinary education kids and zero for the special ed program. We justify it using a formula that I disagree with. We've come up with methodologies that would allow us to accept special needs kids on restrictive criteria that would not cost Arrowhead any money. I think it's a shame that Arrowhead can't find a way to have this resolution each year, at least admit some special kids open enrollment. Special ed families have no real options in the public school system. Their only option is to move their kids into private schools where amazingly the kids' education plan is reimbursed. So I wish we had an option before us today that didn't involve another year of zero specialized kids.
We have a motion to approve the recommended sort of enrollment seats that we for speech and language. Is there a possibility of us tailoring this and having further discussion on it?
There is not. By law, in January, school boards need to approve their open enrollment seats because as early as next week, we start posting for that.
Is there a way that we can have this as a discussion point for our next meeting to talk about next year and we can remedy, remedy this for going forward?
We can certainly do that again. Last year, I'll remind the board members that were around, we had attorney Bob Butler involved. We had a meeting and talked through the various formulas, the costs, the potential cost impact, all that. So we have done all that recently, as recent as last school year.
You know, it's selling the farm with the two plus million dollars and it's supposed to be designated for special ed. What if we would open one seat and if we need an additional teacher, there's some of those funds to pay for an additional teacher.
We talked about earmarking those funds for enhancement to the specialty program for the physical facility that are in higher needs of revamping. That's what we
Well, it's kind of sad to improve the facilities and not allow more children to benefit from them.
I sympathize with Tim's viewpoints and I think I know a part for where he's coming from. But to that point, we have discussed this very, very thoroughly last year. And I think Jeff would agree. I don't want to put words in my mouth, Jeff, but pretty much the pattern and thinking of the board in most years, or in any year I can remember, is we don't spend one-time inputs of money on salaries and competing expenses. Those are wisely attributed to one-time needs, one-time expenses matched with one-time needs, not with salaries and benefitses, which will go on indefinitely.
So as a newer board member, and I haven't been privy to a lot of the discussions in the past, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can have a discussion on this, maybe after the elections, because I mean, everything could I mean, I might not be here by that time, but there might be somebody new in my seat that would like to know about it. So I'm just wondering if they, if we can have this discussion again after the April elections. So the newer board members, if that happens to be the case, can understand this well, let's, you know, people that are still
I can just share a little bit in a, in a nutshell, the formula that we use is what's recommended by the Department of Public Instruction, and it's looking at students not just as a student in a seat, but what are their needs and how much personnel time does that require? Some students, it might be 30 minutes in a whole week, and some students, it might be all day, every day. And so when, when that formula says our staff members are at capacity, or as Adam was saying, actually over capacity to add another student, it could reduce the services to other students. You know, let's say I'm a teacher and I have a reading intervention group of two students that I'm working intensively with, and now a third student comes in. That's less time for the other students. That's one potential risk factor. The other is cost. Some students might be the same, whatever it is, $10,000 that transfers in with a student from one district to another. That might more than cover the cost of that student, or you can have students that cost $80,000 to $100,000. And then you're getting $10,000 and we're paying for more. Now, resident students, you never know who's going to move in or walk in the door. You can have an $80,000 student move in, and that's our responsibility. They're taxpayers here, and that's the way it goes. When they live in a different community, we don't get that whole, we don't, you can't charge them for the dime that's being spent. So then it rests on the taxpayers of Arrowhead or non-resident students. Regular ed students, the same thing, where from the state or per pupil amount is the board is seeing in annual meetings. Let's just round it off as about $10,000 comes for every student open enrollment, it's about $8,000. So we don't get that full reimbursement and for the small number, but the handful of students that leave, they live in Arrowhead, they leave Arrowhead and they go to, they open enroll to a different school nearby, or in most cases, online school. $8,000 is leaving our budget. So just like a little bit of background about the, the funding situations and the potential risk of spending and a potential risk of less services for the students that are here.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, I, I agree with what Amy said. I think it's unfortunate that, you know, we have a good pot of money to and I, and I do agree that it's important to update the physical facilities with them to, you know, not allow an actual student that if there is one that wanted to come in, you know, to the detriment of, you know, being able to improve the facilities instead, kind of goes against what our our whole picture is at school. I understand, I understand the financial ramifications with too, so it's kind of, it's kind of a catch 22.
The other thing is that you have more students than you can put into a classroom. If we cap our classes at 32 and there's more kids in there, we create another section of that class. That doesn't happen with special education. So I, Laura's point about keep putting more students in to understaffing. And the students that are within that program are gonna suffer. So again, I think if you wanted to look at creating those open enrollment seats, I would say hire another because then you can have quality with having open enrollment. But I mean, the point that we were at, we were at this year with it, when that number was five, it's, it's, it's hard to do. And you're doing it, you're doing more intervention, or you're doing more intervention with a higher ratio of students, student retention. And then we talked about as well, within an I E P, there's minutes of service. But then there's all the things that teachers do behind the scenes that aren't built directly into service, coordinating with the regular education staff of those teachers, helping modify assignments, not dealing with parents. They go on and then again, yeah, more in and that becomes less. So I would look at it more from a staffing lens than maybe a purely financial one, obviously staffing also financial piece.
Can we know specifically if there are special ed students that have reached out that wanted to come in that have been denied as a result of?
Yeah, there's a few every single year. And one of them are in our case, where they start out, they go there, they start their gardener or open enroll in there. And then when they come up, it's, you know, they either drop the I E P when they come in or they go to their
So Chris, I appreciate your interest in this and the suggestion that we circle back on this in the summertime is appealing to me. The faces on the board means new solutions to old problems by here. We've had one election pass since last time we were listening. It sounds like we'll have another one. The problem is sophisticated and it's tempting as it is for me to make a motion tonight that we open up one seat. I'm gonna refrain from doing that only because I'm emotionally involved. I would say though that Adam's done a lot of work trying to figure out how to minimize the cost for us. It seems doable. Bob Butler has guided us in the process of coming up with that theory. And if we were to approach this in a way that is protective of our taxpayers and still accomplishes the sort of thing, it takes some plan. And so starting the discussion in the summertime in hopes of having a solution in place by the time next January comes around would be a, I think, a great practice.
I think it's all well and good, but I think we gotta remember what our first charge and our responsibility is, let's dedicate the students of our
I think it's all well and good, but I think we gotta remember what our first charge and our responsibility is, let's dedicate the students of our district. And each of those students are wishing to come here, but they're first and foremost, they're residents of another district. Their district's responsibility to educate those students. So I guess I don't fully understand the argument that we gotta take somebody that's well, it's a discussion, but again, our responsibility is to our students in this district.
I understand. I just think it's worth having a further education of newer board members such as myself or the person that might be sitting in my seat after the election, so we can continue to have this discussion going on.
Do you have a motion? I don't think we've got a motion.
I would say that I would agree that it would be good to revisit this after we have new, presumably maybe some board members, or maybe not. But that being said, I would move that we not accept new special ed students. I'm not sure if I'm stating it correctly. That's my motion.
Well, by Craig, so you're by Kim. Enter the discussion. All in favor, say aye. Okay, next time is the discussion for the board and the next board training workshop. Two dates suggested. Sorry about that. Sorry, Jeff, I'm trying to cut you off. Or reopen that up for discussion and action. For discussion and action on the Arrowhead District Transportation Cooperative Parent Contract Transversal Waiver, which we have a public hearing on earlier this year. We have a motion. I'm moving to approve the filing for the waiver for the okay, I'm moving to approve the resolution authorized, district's, that's the waiver request that the Department of Public Instruction has filed, Bureau of High School District School Board Transportation Consortium request for a public construction waiver, the calculation of parent transportation contract and it was not in state statutes. Twenty-one dot fifty-five, trend three, rent, a temporary fluctuation of district transportation costs related, normal related COVID-19 pandemic.
I'll second.
Okay, movement second, a further discussion. That, all in favor, say aye.
I oppose. I'm staying.
One abstention. Okay, now, discussion on dates for community forum and the board, maybe board training workshop. We had two days set aside tentatively on July, July, January thirty-first, ahead of myself here, wishing for warmer weather, and February seventh. And I believe we had talked about having the forum, community forum on the seventh and the board training workshop on the thirty-first. We do have some conflicts as far as, as far as who can be here on those dates. I think the proposal might be to flip those around and have the forum on the thirty-first, if I recall.
Right, we learned that there's at least one board member that can't be here on the thirty-first for that training. And the early discussions you had was feeling it was important for everyone to be here. So you could flip-flop. Now, I have not checked with a consultant for that February seventh date. But if we could, you could do your forum January thirty-first with one board member missing and then the training either February seventh or some other date in February where everyone could be there and a consultant. Is not suggested.
I, I cannot be there on the seventh or I would arrive. Just on your claim. But I can come in late if that's acceptable for anyone else.
Are you the plaintiff, the counsel?
Assuming. In which case I may.
Can we tackle these one at a time? About your thirty-first, is everybody available on the thirty-first? And yes, are we ready to go?
No, that was why we had the thirty-first scheduled as for training and someone will not be here. And so we were looking at what's a date where everyone could be here for that.
So maybe the question I'm not gonna ask, does everybody feel about having a community forum on the thirty-first?
So.
You're saying the forum on the thirty-first is gonna work.
It's a Monday, right?
It is a Monday. And then I would have a follow-up question. You've talked a little bit about format of your forum, but not details, and that's just around the corner. So would you want to talk now and plan that? And can I help support that discussion or would you want to do that in a, we can further determine now, policy committee, we first started talking about that in a policy committee meeting and that might allow for more time to plan what that forum looks like.
Thirty-first isn't very far away. If we were gonna move it to policy, when would we do that? And would we have time to notify the public? I guess we notify the public anyway. Of the date.
So as long as we're just having a general discussion about how this gets put together, it occurs to me the point of the forum is to open up as informal as possible, as you can in a scheduled meeting, lines of communication for our most passionate parents who wanna attend this stuff. As I'm thinking through the more effective meeting, get to know your meetings that I've been to over the years, it would seem like it would be a good opportunity for each member of the board and select members of the staff to introduce themselves briefly. Suggest that the three-minute limit is twice as long as we should need.
Maybe three times.
But a little biography and the reason for being on the board and the things you hope to learn that night might be a good way to open the meeting and then, and open invitation to those in attendance to, you know, ask questions, make suggestions, start a discussion. You know, I'm sure there's some good agenda items that can be put in. I think that's the essence of what we're doing and when a question's up, I mean.
I like that idea. It should be very informal and just whatever anyone wants to talk about is what we talk about. I don't think there should be an agenda. In general, I think the public should have.
And I did like Amy's idea before, you know, why don't we, we could see how this goes the first time and if not a lot of people show up or if it's not as successful as we anticipated, then we move it to an hour before a board meeting in the future and see if we get more participation and more that and forth. So just keep that optional.
Maybe, I think that's good. In fact, back in the day, I believe it was, or some of us, a number of us went out to the parking lot. And that's some people there and had just a chat in the parking lot. And actually, it was quite amiable for the most part. It was productive, I think. So agreed, we are pretty much on the train to do this first meeting at least. But perhaps we could do have a half an hour or something before a board meeting. So I don't see anything wrong with it.
I agree, but I think if the weather's nice, I think we should move it to the piggybacked parking lot where we can have a beer. Or soda. I agree. I think, I think this first one, I agree. I'd like the idea of not really having a set agenda per se, that we talked about with the topics. With one caveat, I guess one thing I would like to address a little bit would be, you know, we've heard a lot about bullying and we continue to hear about bullying. Emails or I've had them, I've started getting advocacy letters from students with their classes at the end of semesters, they send out advocacy letters. I've had a couple on that topic. I guess it's something, I guess I would like us to potentially address and what the concerns and the how our hands are tied, I guess, to a great extent as far as people think we need, we can tackle things which we really can't. And maybe just a little public education.
We did forty-five minutes at the last board meeting. And so I wasn't planning on administration being at these forums. The community wants to talk to the board. So I wasn't planning that if, if we had like our survey asked for topics, if we, if we chose a topic, then administratively, one or more of us would plan ahead to do, here's a ten-minute presentation, talk, we're there for questions. But when you don't know what questions are going to come up, I mean, we heard from the public, they want to talk with the board. And in terms of bullying, we can give you the same presentation we did last time. I don't, I don't know what more. We, we talked about all the proactive things in place. We talked about all the reactive things in place. You're for different administrators, you have survey data from students.
I think that's up to the parent job. They need to go watch that. A more great presentation.
So that's on the website. Okay, then, then it's available.
And then in that way, we can be reactive. So if the subject comes up in the discussion, I can point them to that resource and lecture to them.
I have a question, I guess, on how we're defining community. I mean, we kind of keep defining it, I think, in terms of the public, parents outside the school. And I'm wondering, even based on some of the outcomes, the responses that were provided in the staff engagement survey, certainly there were some seemingly concerns of not having enough contact between the board and staff at Arrowheads. And I wonder if we ought not broaden our definition of community to welcome the teachers the evening that we meet with the public. If not that forum, then there should be some other forum, I think, for engagement. But I do wonder that it might be an opportunity to open it up to the teachers as well, that if they want, want to be here and engaged, are we welcome?
I think that'd be a great addition.
I think it'd also be worthwhile their while, if they care to participate, to hear concerns from the, from the public as well. But they may not have an opportunity to engage in it.
We would certainly let our full staff know when and when that's happening.
We could also let the feeder schools know what's going on. If they want their parents, even if they don't have children here yet or anything, let the superintendent know and all their teachers, so their parents.
We have a, we have a starting time and an ending time for this. I just think this is valuable meeting to have, but it could go past mid-game. So we just need to have a time for.
First, I would think an hour and a half to two hours, Max, but I don't know, do you think the board is?
Two hours.
So how would we promote that, promote that meeting that's happening? Is it like doing it on our Facebook page? Is there any other vehicles that we would need to get to work there?
That on Facebook, we're there. Our website, like on our front, our main page. We have our Arrowhead advisor newsletter is going out. We have it planned for Friday, so I can go in there.
Are we thinking like the meeting cadence, like what are we talking about, maybe once a month to start to see how it develops?
I heard trying at once and then reassessing.
Okay.
To continue or how.
Yeah, hopefully shows up.
And we don't hang out till nine.
If nobody's here.
So do you wanna schedule this for Monday, the thirty-first, from seven to nine?
I would think so. I mean, I think for the most I mean, you know, we're doing in the gymnasium, that's just a lousy place for me.
Well, that's also a newsplace to do that.
Yeah, I think this is a decent venue for that. For the North Campus Library.
I mean, this is groves of various sizes, it still feels pretty intimate, even with a few people allowed.
Yeah, so you're nine, seven to nine thirty on the thirty-first.
And what do you want to title your forum? Like for community forum with the board, community discussion with the board, or no, conversation with something.
Excellent. Open session with the comments from the public is one of the most thoughtful and well-reasoned, useful information that I've got. People even disagreed civilly. It's wonderful.
Okay, and I guess my, my next, my follow-up question would be, the next board workshop. We have, right, we're not at the seventh. Do you want to identify another date in February now?
Maybe like the twenty-first or the, you don't want it on Valentine's Day.
That's the fourteenth, right? And that's the last day, that's the last Monday in February that I'm.
Well, you got the, oh, okay. What about like the seventeenth?
I'll be fine.
Oh.
I'm going to a wedding in Mumbai. We're guests.
What about the tenth?
I will lock it here.
When are you back?
Uh, seventeen, I think we get back on the twenty-nine. Oh, he'll take care of himself.
It's a Monday.
That one's.
I cannot do this.
I'm not sure, I'll be back. Around from the tenth, move about the seventh.
I think if you kept it on the seventh and made the move, if you would be agreeable to like eight o'clock, I could tell if I'm the only one holding this up.
Yeah, I have to check with a consultant. The other.
Who is the consultant?
Well, I have someone tentatively holding the thirty-first, but that's, you know, that has to change. So it could be the same person or it might be a second person I have in mind. The other thing you could if it's getting pushed into March, the other thing you could do is wait on that. If it's getting pushed into March, the other thing you could do is wait on that until. After the April election in Easter, so much of this.
Absolutely. Why don't we do that?
Yeah.
Good idea.
So then let's just hold on. Unless you want to identify a date now in April, my hunch is it will change. So maybe we wait.
No, you don't.
Makes sense.
I want to get trained in.
You're with everybody?
Sounds good.
Yep. Okay. Well, that, I guess we we're done with the open session. Part of the meeting, we'll be going into closed session. I'd like to have us take a five minute break.
Maybe talk about future agenda. Is that possible?
Yeah, we can move right up. If that's agreeable with the board.
I do have. One thing I would like to. Talk about. Just kind of pulling from all of these surveys and everything that we know. And frankly, you know, some of the emails that we get from concerned parents. About just the overall state of mental health for the kids. I wonder that we couldn't do something. Almost like a a speaker program series.
We actually do that already.
Do you do?
Through our counseling program. We've had throughout COVID, we've had online meetings. I'm looking at Adam because he can probably better explain. We have parent sessions and they are recorded. And some of them deal with mental health.
Have you up there, YouTube took them down for somewhere technical reasons, so. I went back and recorded the one for mental health in the holidays, so I might have to look at re reporting.
Well, I I guess maybe my take on it is is not specific to mental health per se, as maybe. Looking at it from a very positive aspect of. What are the issues right now confronting the kids? There are issues of at times fear and anxiety and perhaps a lack of personal empowerment. And I wonder that there are some really great speakers out there that can really speak. Specifically to those things that can help to allay some of the fear factor right now and 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 maybe encourage. Greater independence and more personal empowerment, just. Things on success. I mean, there are a lot of really great motivational speakers and I can appreciate this might approach on some kind of budgeting around this. But I think just general speakers that could really serve an uplifting cause. In the face of what I think are, you know, some some really tough psychological issues that the kids are are facing right now. So I I'd like to be able to pursue that at some point and and see if it could work around some relative frequency. Of developing programs that the kids could, you know, be a part of as general sessions. And and maybe, you know, those could be reported so that the staff could, you know. Be enlightened by 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 the same. But if those programs are an hour off and maybe the staff could use that time. You know, the downtime where the students are involved in a program, the staff could use that for grading and some of their other. You know, their own personal time that it's, it appears that the 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 staff engagement survey suggests that they. Diary in a meeting, so maybe it could be a multi purpose type of thing.
It's a good idea. I mean, just from the kids' lens, but also how do parents cope with kids with mental health of, you know, get them to set them up for success.
Absolutely.
To, because there's a lot of. And it's what happened. There's also, I mean, there's also kids that are very proactive that'll reach out to the counselors. I have one daughter that has done that multiple times. Some of the counselors here are fantastic. Have the counselors also gone the other way and gone into classrooms to have a a little talk to say, hey, this is, these are things that are available to you? Or is that, is that something that's educated to the kids through the counseling service as well or? Is that wings?
A couple of years ago, I think this was maybe the year COVID hit or the year before COVID hit. We had a spring one where we had a mental health focus. Session. I'm trying to think if there's another place. They they go into all the conferences, go into the English classes to talk about. Technically, I'm not sure if they hit on that.
Because I think there, I mean, there's a lot of kids that are not proactive that will make out for that, that maybe if they have a chance to, you know. Get into some of the classrooms, even if it's very short, a lot of time, let them know what's available without the album feel comfortable with that, that person is counseling. Maybe there's an opportunity there that would kind of bridge that gap and make those students feel comfortable to.
Actually, where do we go with that?
But I mean. Well, this is a future agenda. I'd like to administer. Discussion.
Anything else?
When we move into close.
I might say about ten minute recess and then come back again.